Good day. I don't know what day it is. It's Tuesday and it's Plan for Water Day. So, hi everyone. Thank you for participating via Zoom. And with that, we will say the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada and my nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Yes. Division one?
Here.
Division two?
Here.
Division three? Here. Division four?
Here.
Division five?
Here.
Thank you. We're going to start our meeting with Jennifer providing an update on the Plan for Water call.
Yeah. The purpose of this item is to receive input from the board regarding a draft policy that is intended to address the long-term maintenance of the Plan for Water. And in most particular, the modeling portion of the effort, as we've discussed many times, it's going to be really important that we keep the modeling up to date to ensure we are able to leverage this new tool as well as possible. Also get the most benefit out of it. So with that, the policy is fairly simple and straightforward. So we are here just to receive an input from the public or from the board. Based off of the input we've received, we'll make any modifications necessary. And then it would come back in a regular board meeting for actual consideration of voting on by the board once it's complete.
Or did you comment? Question?
We did discuss this before. And I think the five years is sort of where we landed, wasn't it?
Yeah, this is intended to memorialize that discussion in writing.
Right.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I wondered what the relevance is of having the paragraph on a drought contingency plan. How does that? I didn't understand the connection to that in the Plan for Water policy.
Honestly, I think that is a giant typo. It's the policy that I wrote off the format from. Okay. So please strike that second paragraph.
Another thing in the paragraph 81 FX 2.1, I wondered if we could, well, first of all, I really like all of the metrics that are presented. I wondered if we can have the same measurement so that we're looking at, when we talk about raw water released as an example, then we talk about miners' inches purchased. Could we choose a, whether it's acre feet or whatever we want to do as a...
They're consistent.
Yeah. So then we know we're concerned.
I would recommend we provide it in...
Well, I was just going to say that's kind of two different pieces. Why, water released is different than the number of miners' inches that we sell. So having all those different metrics, I think, are important in that you'll continue to see how we release 100 acre foot and we sell 1,000 miners' inches. I'm just throwing numbers out there. So the next year, we only sold 950 miners' inches, but we put out the same amount in terms of the actual releases of water for the demand portion of it.
And our releases? What were the releases? Are they demand or is this stress?
Those would be, yeah, they would be our demands. What we need to do to be able to meet the requirements that we have, whether it's purchases, whether it's in-stream flow requirements, whatever the case may be, so that you continue to have that. So they're not always one and the same, right? As we've talked about before.
Is it fair to say that you're using the verbiage at the point of where that measurement is taken? They know at the box, I mean, we cut the hole for miners' inches. We don't talk about acre feet.
Correct.
I don't know about the release point.
Correct. So we would be talking about it in terms of various locations where we make measurements, like at the heads of the canals and the ends of the canals, we make measurements on how much we're actually releasing and what's going through. And then you have what we're actually selling, which is what's being sold at the box, but not necessarily being taken at the box.
Yeah, one of the challenges is that we view, well, reservoir storage as a whole on acre feet, but the flows coming out of the reservoirs, we're looking at at cubic feet per second. And then remember, the miners' inch is more of a unit that is fully for the purpose of revenue recovery for putting people into different customer classes. And so they're kind of not one and the same, but I think we can do as best of a job as we can of equalizing some of the units.
Actually, now that you state it like that, we could convert miners' inches to acre feet.
There you go.
Do as part of that process. But it would be the what's purchased in acre feet instead of miners' inches.
Yeah.
What's released in acre feet. To try to keep the nomenclature all the same? Yeah, we can do that part.
That would be awesome.
Maybe that was what was your question? And I didn't quite follow that.
No, that's okay.
That would be, that's relatively easy to do.
Perfect. I also think it would be helpful, though, to keep the miners' inches in there just to show year over year how is our volume increasing or decreasing in terms of sales. But I would like to see that as a formal measure.
We can.
And then my last comment is on, it has volumes conserved under that same paragraph. And I wondered if we would note, what's the baseline for that? Is the baseline the year before? Is the baseline some year we established, 2023? I just didn't know.
Yeah. Chip, what is your current baseline? Is it 2013?
Well, in the latest drawing, it was 2020.
Right.
It seems to be a moving target. So that's a great question.
A lot of times, the numbers we're reporting are dictated by whatever emergency order we are under. So, for example, a governor's emergency order will say, you shall decrease treated water use by 10% in compared to 2020. Some other years, it's 2013. So it just really depends on where we're at. But we can come up with maybe a standard year for ourselves and then also report any additional years required by any emergency actions.
Yeah, I just think we want to, we're measuring ourselves in this instance so that if we can just establish what it is, we have reporting to the state and other things that we undoubtedly will have to do. But just seems like for this, I really like all these metrics. I just think we should have, what is the baseline year we're talking about?
Mm-hmm.
Maybe it's a rank, right? We have a high year, historical year, and a low historical year, and where do we fall within?
Yeah, that could be.
And if we were on a particular drought contingency, what phase, et cetera, right? We can talk about that because this would obviously be a year in review kind of a look, so.
Yeah. Great, thank you. Well, good work on this. And I think this is a good addition.
And does this define what department? Because it continues to say staff shall provide, staff shall do this, that, and the other thing. Is this Chip's, you know, is it water?
Everybody.
It's just about everybody will have some part.
Okay.
Primarily will fall on Chip's team, but it will cross multiple areas.
Is it important to have you or, you know, a single person designated as, okay, it's time to do the updates now, everybody?
I think the way that it is written is intended to make sure that there's no managers in here happening.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Questions, comments? How about from the general public? Any questions, comments? Or nine phone? And you could also use the chat function if that is easier for you. Not seeing any.
All right. Well, then we will get this kind of wrapped up and cleaned up a little bit more and then we'll bring it back to the board for formal consideration in a formal board meeting. It will not come back in the Plan for Water meeting.
Right. So it'll just be a consent item at some point?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Great.
Okay, so will we adjourn then until four o'clock?
We are going to adjourn until four o'clock because we have committed to a time certain of 4:00 p.m. for the Plan for Water work. We will be kicking off with the matrix review, which should only take a couple of minutes. And then we will be doing a presentation that will be led by the consultants regarding the reservoir operations model.
Perfect. Okay. We'll be back at four. Thank you, Chris. Afternoon. And welcome to all our guests in the audience. Thank you so much for being here. And Jennifer to launch our meeting.
You put us at home. So we will start with a really quick check-in. Just a reminder for folks that are participating, you may raise your hand. People in the audience, just feel free to either come up to the podium or just catch our attention and we'll get you in for a comment. And then folks at home, feel free to also use the chat if you so desire. So we have the Plan for Matrix second. As every goes, we're kind of going a little bit back and forth between stages seven, eight, and nine. And that's just simply as a function of wanting to get all the modeling kind of going at once. So the item we have today is a presentation regarding the reservoir operations model. So I will turn it over to Jared and I think we'll get going. So just to...
Matrix.
I just said the matrix.
Sorry.
What?
Nothing. I'm sorry.
I have a question on matrix.
Any questions on the matrix?
We have nine meetings proposed. It says in the matrix. And on meeting two, am I correct?
Yeah.
So the stages are a little bit combined together. So we've combined...
Right, well, they are combined on the second page, right? It says nine.
Oh, there you go. Yes.
Yeah. That's it. Just for...
It was an addition of all the other, the other three, seven, eight, and nine, each had two or three months associated with them. So it was, they were all three, seven, eight, nine. Nine total. So just, we just combined them and that's where that nine came from. Whether it stays at nine or goes to eight or goes to 10, we don't know at this point.
We'll try to be as efficient as possible.
I just have that in my mind.
Yes. That's how that nine was made.
Thank you.
All right. Now, is there any other questions or comments before I just blow them over to go? I'm not seeing anybody from the public. And, you know, we could always revisit it if you come up with a question as we're moving along. All right. Try it again.
All right.
Jared, take it away.
Good afternoon. Jared Emery. I'm with Western Hydrologics. And we're going to talk about the reservoir operations model a little bit. I've been doing most of the technical work in developing the model. So real quick, you know, step back and look at the bigger picture. We've got three technical processes going right now. We've got the reservoir operations model. We've got the IDC demands analysis. And we've got a HECC HMS watershed runoff model. And the three are working together. You'll hear me discuss the other two in the context of the reservoir operations model. And we'll talk about how they work together a little bit today.
Yeah. Let me get her up. There it goes. Do you guys want one of the lights turned down? You can, you can see everything on your screen, okay? I take it right here.
We have our screen.
So today, we're going to talk about just an overview of the reservoir operations model, what it is, what it does. We're going to talk about the work that's been performed to date. We're going to talk about the next steps, the work that's still left to be performed. And then we're going to have time for discussion and questions. I do want you to feel free to ask a question at any time. You don't have to wait until the end. Ask about it while it's still fresh. So the reservoir operations model is built on a software platform called HECC RESSIM. This software is made by the Army Corps of Engineers Hydrologic Engineering Center. That's the HEC in HECC RESSIM. And then the RESSIM is short for Reservoir System Simulation. So the Army Corps of Engineers has built this software. They use it all over the country in operating their reservoirs. And then they've given out the software for anybody to use to build their own reservoir operations models. It's some of the best reservoir operations software that fits out. They've been putting a lot of work on it and to it for a very long time. And so what we're doing with the software, the main inputs to our model are the IDC demands that were discussed last month, the HECC HMS watershed runoff, which is a model that's going to be discussed next month, and regulatory requirements, physical constraints, et cetera. HECC RESSIM then does its calculations. And output from the model is river flows, reservoir storage, any diversions being made, flow through powerhouses, and in the end, deliveries to customers. And so, again, it takes the watershed runoff, which is the water coming into the system. We have the demands, which is the water coming out of the system. The reservoir operations model basically operates the reservoirs and flows through canals and rivers to figure out how to get that runoff to the delivery points.
And the HECC HMS, that's what we talked about, that's the CMIP-6. That's where, that's where that part of that comes into the equation. Starts with that, so just kind of tying them all together for you.
From our previous...
Yeah. Well, we agreed to use the CMIP-6 for the best available information related to climate change, et cetera.
Diversions into canals is the upper storage area. Delivery, that wouldn't take into account delivery.
That's correct. You know, when we say here, diversions into canals, that means the major conveyance canals. And deliveries means more the diversions into the smaller canals. But we're going to talk a little bit more detail about canals later. Which canals are in, which canals are, which canals are explicit and which are implicit, basically.
I assume we're starting from ground zero. There's not like a previous model that was used for this watershed that feeds into this?
Kind of. And we'll talk about that a little bit more, too.
Okay.
So here's the area that is modeled by RESSIM. I've drawn the watersheds, the main runoff watersheds, and then labeled a couple of the major reservoirs. And so what our model does is it brings in all of the river, the rivers that we're modeling, shown here in blue. Then we're layering on all the canals that we are modeling, shown in green. And again, we'll discuss which canals are shown in the screen layer and which ones are not. And then the model brings in the watershed runoff that's being developed by the HMS model. And so each one of these red points is a place where the model is bringing in inflow runoff. And then... Yeah.
Spanish, so we can understand.
Each of these points...
Each of what points?
Sorry. Each of the red points on the map is a place where the HECC HMS model is going to develop how much water was developed in that watershed, right? Rainfall, snow melt, runoff, et cetera. How much water is making it into the river.
So it's a measurement point.
And do you have an actual gauge there?
The unimpaired.
No, not necessarily. Some of these watersheds are not gauged and we need the model to estimate how much water we think is expected.
So you take a land mass, so much rain falls on it, estimate?
Yeah. Yeah.
So that's like established methodology that you're just applying to those non kind of gauged points?
I will say that the HMS presentation next month will probably have more detail on that. And since I'm not building that model, I don't want to, I don't want to say something that's incorrect. But, but yes, they have established processes for developing an estimate of flow in an ungauged watershed.
Okay.
You can also look at similar ones, similar watersheds, same elevation, same topography type of thing, and also use that to help coordinate whatever's coming off of that. That may have a gauge with it. So not specific on this, but it's very similar to one over in Eldorado County. Then you can use that information to help determine.
I would imagine if these red dots are connectors for your model, that you could increase them exponentially and have more accuracy. But this is probably the point where the accuracy is good.
Yes. Although I would say, you know, if you increase the number of points, you're not necessarily getting more accuracy. You're essentially subdividing kind of the same accuracy, right?
Can I have a question on the first? There's a question out there. Go ahead. It's a statement. There's a calibration process. Although there are gauges at every one of those points, there are gauges in the watershed. And they will calibrate the HMS runoff model to those gauges. So it does have guidance on what it comes up with at each one of those points.
And if I may add, I'm Marco Bell with the project management department. Jared is doing the RESSIM model. Our firm is doing HMS model. The HMS model is a physical based model. So it has a lot of physicality to it. So the fact that we know the flows, the elevation, all those physical factors, actually improve the calibration process. And they're using a set of the calibration process to develop the runoff. And they have transformation functions that go from precipitation to snow. They produce a snow melt. And from that, they can get the runoff. Exactly a pretty good process. And we proposed that to work before. And with the, because it is a physical process that we have able to simulate specifically how it behaves here at the NID runoff. That feeds directly into the Gero's RESSIM model, which has a red, we have a runoff at each red for the red point that covers the entire region. And we will get more into that next month.
Questions or comments? So that they can be heard for, I asked them.
Yeah. Just a reminder, we're going to have to start using the podium so that you're connected into the sound. It's hard to pick everyone up without it. Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're ready to, do we have more questions?
I do.
Okay. Let's do it.
Back at the first page, the first map. And those are individual watersheds. And are those lines like on top of the ridge?
Yes.
Figure it out. Thank you.
If anyone from the public have any questions before we move on? Seeing any. All right. Let's proceed.
Okay. So in addition to these red dots showing where the model, where water is coming into the model, we then put in, these purple arrows are from the IDC demands analysis. And these are the points where we're taking water out of the system to make deliveries. I believe that during the IDC presentation last month, Katie explicitly showed you a table listing these points. I don't have the table, but it's these, you know, seven locations of the purple arrows. And so again, our model is making, taking the water at the red dots and trying to move it to the locations of the purple arrows using reservoirs, canals, river conveyance, et cetera.
Yes, please. The purple arrow?
So the purple arrows are places where we are taking water out of the system to meet demands.
Okay.
Specifically to meet demands.
Okay.
And so the demands analysis gives us numbers at each of these purple arrows for the demand at that location. And so you'll see there's one at Lake Combe, two along the Bear River Canal, and four along Deer Creek. So there is a previous model for the NID system. It was first developed for the FERC licensing around 2008, 2009. It was improved for some other processes you guys have done. And it was a very good model with a lot of, you know, really good aspects to it. The major weakness of that model is that because it was built for the FERC licensing, it used HECC RESSIM version 3.0A, which came out in 2007. And the model that was built in 3.0 will not run in current versions of RESSIM. Currently, they're on 3.3, which came out approximately two years ago. And 3.0 not only will not run on 3.3, it won't run on 3.1. Between 3.0 and 3.1, they changed a configuration aspect that now they won't, they can't update models. And so the model has been maintained on this legacy software, right? And as we know, you know, in terms of software, 2007 is a long time ago. And so what we've done is we have rebuilt the model from scratch, but using a lot of the information from the previous model. So we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. We didn't have to go back out and ask PG&E about the capacity of tunnels or powerhouses. All that information was there, but we did do a complete rebuild.
And that was a model that was vetted through the FERC process, right? So had buy-in from the agencies and the various groups that were part of that process. Yeah.
And this version 3.3 has some additional features that allowed us to upgrade some parts of the model that had been a little bit clunky before. You know, they worked, but it's just not ideal. And we'll talk about some of those upgrades in a bit.
So 3.3 is the current version?
3.3 is the current version. And, you know, 3.2 came out in, like, 2013. So they're not coming out with new versions very often. So we wouldn't expect to see another one for at least a few years. And we're hoping that they've learned their lesson so that 3.3 is compatible with 3.4. You can move it in, right?
No gates for any of it?
So in the model, we modeled 30 reservoirs explicitly, which is to say we modeled the storage in those reservoirs, the evaporation in those reservoirs. It's these 30 that are listed. There are another 15 reservoirs that are not, let's say, they don't use storage seasonally. They generally stay full to keep head on a tunnel inlet or something. And while we have those reservoirs in the model, we also basically just model them as being full throughout the entire 30-year simulation. We're not trying to look at storage going up or down. Things like Milton's diversion dam, Drum after Bay, right? It's a reservoir, but we just keep it full. And we're not saying anything about the actual storage in that reservoir. Similarly, we have... We have, I believe, eight canals that we are explicitly modeling. And by that, I mean the model results will show the flow in these canals, will show the losses out of these canals because these are conveyance canals, trying to get water from one facility to another facility. There's many, many other NID canals that are not being modeled. And those canals are all accounted for in the IDC demands analysis. So for instance, you know, you have diversions out of Lake Comby. A lot of those diversions end up into the Comby Phase Two Canal. Our model's not going to tell you flows in the Comby Phase Two Canal, right? The IDC demands analysis went and looked at the demand at all the parcels, and then they come up and give us the water that needs to be put in at the head, basically coming out of Lake Comby. And that's where our model stops. And so then anything on the canals downstream of Lake Comby are accounted for in the IDC analysis.
Is that a separate simulation, or it's just a guess?
So that's the model that was talked about last month. Don't think I know enough to answer that question.
Yeah, that's the, that's the demand model, right? So when we just start to look at things like land development uses, population growth, soft surface areas, all those things are part of that IDC model that gets put into here. So it develops that demand that this model then says, okay, at this point, it assumes demand based on all these different canals that feed from this point. It's gonna have an influence, 200 acre feet at this point. So then the model identifies what it needs to do to put that in there.
Okay.
In terms of the volume, yeah.
Thank you. I remember that.
Yeah.
So with those facilities that we discussed, we went and built the model schematic, built the, you know, framework, all of the conveyance, all of the watersheds. We layered on our conveyance network, all of the rivers, all the canals, reservoirs, diversion structures. This is the final resulting model schematic. Again, it looks fairly similar to the one from the previous model. The previous model had flows on the Middle Yuba and South Yuba, all the way down to Yuba County Water Agency facilities. But it wasn't represented geographically. It was just kind of like a bunching of nodes. And so we've actually got that geographically represented, but hydrologically it's the same as the previous model. So again, this is the final model schematic. I know it's hard to really see anything going on here. There's a lot of facilities you really need to zoom in to look at much.
Sure.
So on the model schematic and framework, you know, you don't have a legend here, right? So, you know, I think red squiggly lines and then orange and green dots.
Yeah.
Could you take a minute and tell us what the?
I could. So take a moment to try and figure out how to say this. The orange lines represent rivers and streams. The blue lines are the portions of those rivers or streams where the model is outputting flow data.
Although this particular map does have blue lines on it.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
The one before.
Oh, the next one does.
Yeah. And so the blue lines are layered on top of those orange ones. Essentially in the software, you're clicking on orange lines and saying, turn this into a blue line.
I see. Okay, thank you.
And then the red dots generally correspond back to those red dots from the map we had looked at where flow is coming into the model.
Red dot with white circle?
Yeah, so the red dot with a white circle is where flow is coming into the model. A red dot without a white circle just means it's a point of interest.
A point of measuring?
Certainly not.
A good fishing hole.
Well.
I know, I'm trying to think of a good example of a point where we don't have a white circle.
Dump the bottom in.
Yeah, so in some places, the software forces you to put in a red dot, even if you're not interested in having inflows. For instance, at the, both at the upstream and downstream end of every reservoir, at every diversion dam. And so just to make the model work, there's some reasons where you have to put a red dot even if we aren't pulling in inflow.
So as a real neophyte here, what would you say I should take away from? I mean, what, this, I mean, what's the, as we say, what, so what?
What is the takeaway?
Yeah, what's the takeaway? What do I need to, what, what are you showing me that demonstrates kind of the solidness of the model? I mean, we need it kind of, I think.
Yeah, I understand. So I guess we're not there yet.
Okay.
Right, we're still, this is, we're still talking about the building of the model.
Okay.
And so this is literally a screenshot from the software of the final schematic.
Okay.
I guess the takeaway from this exact slide is it has been built.
Okay.
And, you know, it's ready to move on with higher level model setup.
And there's detail in there, right? It's not like we have two nodes for our whole watershed, right? They've, they've gone through the process of breaking these down into all these sub-basins and then developing information so that we're getting, trying to get as much information as we can out of it. So I think overall, what it's saying is there's a lot of pieces that are going into this model in terms of the information that it's providing and ultimately giving us good results as we move forward.
Okay.
It's a comprehensive.
Yeah, right.
I would imagine that you have some sort of a coverage goal that you were targeting. To me, if I'm looking at the orange lines versus the blue line, the coverage looks like it's 70, 80% of the waterways in the area.
Yeah, although, you know, the orange lines don't cover 100% of the waterways, right?
Okay, so there's some that are unrepresented?
Yeah, certainly, you know, minor streams are not represented. Generally, if a river is not used for conveying project water or moving water from one reservoir to another, then it's probably not included.
Yeah, and back in, was it 2017 or 18, whenever we did that first update of this, we identified some additional sub-basins that weren't part of the original model that was done as part of FERC. It's like things, Bear River below, Bear River Canal wasn't part of the hydrology for that, right? Because nobody cared about it in terms of the FERC process part of it. So we added the sub-basin of the Bear River below that point, I think Raccoon Creek, Auburn Ravine, and there was another one, can't think it off the top of my head. Anyway, so we took some additional sub-basins in the lower portions of our system and also developed those. And those also is part of this process, what are included in this.
So at this point, with what you guys have now, do you feel comfortable that the coverage is good?
We feel that we have a pretty good model that's representative of the basins that we, various basins that we have within our system.
Is there, are there minor streams that do not convey NID water? Can we name them? Green Horn Creek.
Yeah.
Deep Hollow Creek. Pass Dark Diversion, Wolf Creek. There are a number of them up there. Pick up natural.
All right, we do have a comment question from the public front, Otis Swan. Given the interrelations of NID, PG&E, and PCWA on both supply and demand sides, to what degree are the consultants in contact with PCWA? To what degree are the models of the two agencies compatible? If not currently compatible, are there discussions plans to make the models regionally compatible? Jeff, you're probably the best one to answer that. Jeff is basically also an expert in PG&E modeling, so, or PCWA much.
Yeah, PCWA is a longtime client of ours. I've been working for them since 1994. And I know, Jared and I worked for both of them very closely. And we do have PCWA demands represented in the model. I spent some time with Tony Berlante over at PCWA, tracking down those demands. So they gave us a demand set that they're comfortable with, and so we've included that in the modeling. It's not part of the IDC modeling that was talked about last month, but it's more of, you know, PCWA has a contract with PG&E, and they've sort of maxed out the amount of water they can take. So they've done that. They've provided us with the last 10 years, I believe, of the demand data, and we're using that in the model for both calibration and simulation.
And then as we move forward in this presentation, you'll start hearing what everybody refers to as the blue and red, basically, it was formerly a spreadsheet, but now it's incorporated in the model. So that will help explain it. That shows both PG&E and NID water together.
And inherently has PCWA water in the PG&E demand water.
It is. Yeah, PG&E serves that water to PCWA.
Correct.
PCWA purchases water from PG&E within our, just our co-mingled system through a water supply agreement. Thank you.
And then one last for Otis. I know Otis knows this, but PCWA has a pump station where they can take water from the American River and offset shortages from PG&E. And we can represent that too, although this model isn't really set up for that. We're, we're really trying to focus on just the PG&E side of the delivery. PCWA is interested in that because then they'll know what they need to pump from the American River to offset those shortages. But that's not in this model, but that is how we look at the problem for PCWA's behalf.
And we'll share that information with them.
But I think the key from that, right, was that PCWA has effectively maxed out its PG&E water. So that demand's relatively simple in terms of the process for us, in terms of where water goes.
Otis, that a follow-up question. So the PCWA demand data is included in the NID model, but the modeling I am hearing is not being built with compatibility yet. Yeah.
So.
Their model's a little bit different. They don't have the IDC portion in the demand, their demand model, do they?
You know, PCWA, since they've maxed out their demand, there's no real reason to go to that length to try to represent. It's just money that's not well spent. So when we look at full demand, full contract demand from PG&E for PCWA, they'll, PG&E will deliver whatever is available hydrologically. And so the limitation isn't on the demand, it's on what's supplied.
Right. Which gets further impacted based off of any additional flows committed through the FERC process.
Correct.
So that's one of the things we're working with at the same time is with our FERC relicensing, we've also been doing some additional, additional modeling related to additional flows to address some potential temperature issues in the Lower Yuba. And so we look at that in terms of further shortages, but in our world, you know, PCWA is a buyer of PG&E. So you'll see it in our modeling shown as a PG&E issue.
But what I was hearing is that since they've maxed out what they can take, it's a static number, it's not a variable number.
Well, it's variable in difference in dry, critical dry years, when the, depending on the supply.
But the demands can't continue to rise for the next 50 years through that process.
It gets very uncomfortable.
There's a difference between demand and delivery, right? Demand is, I'll take your water if you have it.
Yeah.
If you don't have it, then I still have the demand, but I'm not getting the delivery.
Yeah, so the demand for PCWA through, of PG&E is static, the delivery is the variable.
The way we're, yes. The way, the way we're showing it in the model, I think we're using, what is it, a ten-year, five-year average, ten-year average of PCWA.
Is there something similar with South Sutter?
No, we don't go, we don't go.
Does it?
Down to Camp Far West. Now, we would look at it in terms of when you'll, when you see in any of the work we have developed for the FERC licensing and the additional information request, you'll see that delta between the demand and the supply of ability to deliver as shown as a shortage. We don't do that same thing for South Sutter, but South Sutter, they, because they're the lowest in the watershed, they typically fill every year. They don't, I don't think there's many years or that they don't fill.
Right, real dry years.
Yeah, super, super dry years. But we don't model that.
Thank you.
Good.
So just to reiterate there, you know, this model is simulating deliveries of Yuba Bear Water to PCWA through their PG&E contract. We'll get into it a little bit later, but that includes cuts to their deliveries based on that PG&E contract. And then, you know, while the models are not linked, you know, when PCWA runs their model, they take output from this model as input to their model. Because as Jeff said, to the extent that they're not getting their full contract amount, they just need to pump that much more out of the middle fork. And so they're accounting for that by taking this output. And, you know, currently they use output from the old FERC model, and then at some point in the future, they would transition to using output from this model. So once we added all those facilities, we went in and added all of the reservoir capacity, canal capacity, spillway capacity tables. Again, these are almost exclusively just taken out of the old model. So like I said, we didn't have to reinvent the wheel, go back and look at old documents. This was all just taken from the established model that was accepted part of the FERC process.
But this does take into account the Deadpool and bathymetry information that we have in terms of capacities within, storage capacities within the reservoirs.
Yeah, and that is a good point. I guess the one place where we did not take from the old model is we used a new relationship for Rollins reservoirs, based on new bathymetry that was done recently.
So what I, it's, it's included in there that we have less storage capacity in Rollins?
Yeah, yeah.
So you did that last.
And Comby as well.
We asked that last time about the Deadpool. So it's a capacity minus the Deadpool is the new capacity?
Minus the bathymetry information.
Gotcha.
So that should all be in there.
Doug, just for me to remind myself and for others who might be listening, that word that you just used, the?
Bathymetry?
The symmetry?
Yeah.
Wasn't that the study that we commissioned to figure out how much of the storage is being taken up with?
Sediment.
Sediment.
Yep.
Degree.
Yep.
So this is taking into account the sediment as well as the Deadpool?
Correct. So it doesn't, it doesn't artificially have too much storage in Rollins based on an initial when we first built it.
Thank you. It's a big word. Not everything knows that word.
Just don't ask me to spell it.
We went in and operated a couple of operations rules from the old model. So for instance, here is the winter operating plan for Spalding Conduit. It's a little bit more explicit in this model. We're able to do some things with the new features of the new software that in the old model, it had to be a little bit more rule of thumb.
And how did this change? What changed from using the old model to your more accurate, newer version of the model?
In general, somewhat lower flows in the kind of December through March period through the conduit. And then similarly at Bear River Canal as well.
2019, a wet year?
It was somewhat wet. Definitely wasn't a dry year.
Wasn't dry.
Why the drop in July?
Oh, it's a maintenance period. They took the canal down a few weeks for maintenance. And the model does maintenance periods on all canals and powerhouses to reflect the fact that you do have to pull them down and lose that generation, or lose, you know, in this case, lose that conveyance capacity. So as Jennifer alluded to, in the FERC modeling process, the model could not keep track of the ownership of water between NID and PG&E. Yeah, the co-mingled water. And so for that process, a spreadsheet was built that takes the RedSim model output and reconfigures some of the deliveries to account for the ownership. And so under that paradigm, the model results were not the final answer, the spreadsheet results were the final answer, and the model results were an intermediate step essentially. And so with this new software, we've been able to track the ownership of the water during runtime in the model so that the model results are the final answer. And so it is both tracking the ownership and then, so here we're looking at inflow to Rollins. And we kept the old paradigm of NID water is blue, PG&E water is red. And then we even got it shaded as to whether it's water that's been imported to Rollins from the Yuba River, or whether it's natural Bear River water flowing into Rollins. And so then with that flow into Rollins, we can then track the color of storage in Rollins. It's shown here for a few years as an example. And then when we're making deliveries, we track the color of the water coming out of Rollins and being diverted into the Bear River Canal. And of course, those diversions into the Bear River Canal can sometimes be based on the inflow to Rollins and the storage at Rollins. And so while this is not fully functional yet, the intention of this model is that it's going to look at inflows, storage in Rollins, and it's going to implement both the cuts to PCWA's supply based on the terms in their water supply agreement from PG&E, as well as NID's drought contingency plan, and cut those deliveries into, say, the Bear River Canal out of Rollins.
This is very interesting.
It is. It's really amazing.
You've got a very complicated system.
All of it, yeah.
The diversions is really interesting to see how the water is being used for power versus deliveries.
And whose water is whose. I mean, that's really remarkable.
Yeah, I never really realized that.
Dry years.
And that's where your PCWA water lies within, right?
Right, within the PG&E water.
Yeah, yeah.
Because when you look at the inflows compared to the storage, so this is reflecting that PG&E borrows some of our storage, but what you're showing is there's more PG&E water going through the system, but we store more in Rollins.
Right. Very cool.
How much of their water goes to?
How much of their water goes to PCWA that goes through the system? I mean, and how much of it is kind of flushed?
Yeah, so they sell 100,000 acre feet to PCWA, and I think that on average PG&E has about 250,000, maybe 300,000 acre feet coming through.
Is that all through Rollins?
So certainly coming through the drum system, whether that spills at Rollins, right?
Going back to Karen's earlier question, what's the killer app here? Now that we have this data, what is it, what does it show us? Like where can we improve efficiency or make some money?
Yeah, so certainly this is the, the tool to explore the model output, to explore the answers to those questions.
Okay.
Right? And so I'd say that where we're at in the process is that we are wrapping up the building of the tool, and then we're going to start asking the questions and then go and find the answers, right?
Okay, you know that you need this information, and once you have it, then we'll start asking the right questions.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And I will point out, you know, this is essentially a screenshot of the tool. You can see there's a, a blue bar at the top that lists a couple of aspects. Here we say, what is it, you know, inflows to Lake Spalding, inflows to Rollins, Rollins storage. And this is, and then you can see a little bar at the bottom where I've essentially zoomed in on the full period of record. And so this is a tool that's completely interactive. We can zoom in on data. If you hover over data, it'll show you the values. And so again, this is the, one of the main tools we're going to be using to go look at what different, different demand levels combined with different climate change hydrology levels due to these deliveries.
I get you.
And it's one less step, right? We don't have to go back to the spreadsheet now and make the adjustments based on what the model puts out, so it also saves you a little bit of effort that way.
It's an impressive tool.
And so the model is mostly built, we're still working on the drought contingency plans and the delivery cutbacks. Other than that, it's, you know, we're, we're ready to start looking at the calibration of the model and how well it performs. And so we're performing some initial calibration studies. And by that, what we're doing is we're running the model with essentially recent historic conditions and then looking at how the results compare to recent historic actual operations. And so for watershed runoff, while the HECC HMS process is still playing out, we don't have that data and we won't for a little while, we've got historic watershed runoff that was previously developed by HDR. They did a really good job on that hydrology. We've extended it a few years so that it goes through 2021. And so we're running that runoff for our calibration studies while we wait for the inflow from the HECC HMS. And then for demands, because the IDC analysis is still going, we've looked at the last 10 years of deliveries. So for example, here on the bottom, we've got deliveries from Lake Colby. Each of the last 10 years is one of the gray lines, and the average, the daily average of the last 10 years is the blue line. So we're taking the average of all the January 1st and the average of all the January 2nd, et cetera, to get that blue line. And so when we're running this model, when we run it from 1976 through 2011, we're using that blue line, the average of the last 10 years. And then when we run it for the last 10 years, we're using the individual gray line that corresponds to that year. So we're using the actual historic deliveries to dial in those reservoirs.
You start at 1976, that's the first year you have accurate data?
Yes.
Ideally, like any model, right, the, it's, they're not perfect, they're not 100% accurate, but you try to put as much information as you can so that it mimics what's going on based on things that we've seen in the past so that we feel confident that it's good information that's coming out. But it's not, it's not gospel, it's not the final word that the model says there's going to be 287,000 acre feet available on dry year, that that's exactly what we're going to get, right?
Sure.
Same with what comes out of the system after that type of year, so.
A, a lot of the weather forecasting models are, are moving into AI ML kind of modeling, where we do, create a model, do a bunch of training on it, start doing inferencing on top of that. Is, is this HECC model, the rest of them stuff moving towards that? Or are we kind of stuck more in a linear algorithm that somebody's created and we're just feeding it data today and then we get the output for tomorrow? It's not actually training and doing inference?
Yeah, so the forecasted inflows that you're talking about, those are an input to the model, and so those have to be developed somewhere else.
Yeah, sure.
And, and so, you know, essentially we've got a model that can take inflows from any source at all.
Okay.
And we're linking it up with the HECC HMS model.
So you're making use of, of those inferencing type, you know, NOAA models or whatever is, is an input to this HECC model?
It's possible. And so again, what we're doing is we're running recent historic flows.
Hello, so the input to flow or hydrology for precipitation that involves runoff are actually Simmons Six models. We're looking at climate change, that sort of projection, and then for the historical data, we're looking at what those models go for the historical data and kind of matching into what we have already. So in terms of AI, artificial intelligence, that has not been developed into the Simmons Six model.
Okay.
That's been done for real-time forecasting for like snowmen. We're not developing a real-time forecasting model, we're doing like a planning-based model that can analyze and take a look at climate, which is taking a look at what the weather conditions are.
Okay, that's fair. Thank you.
Can I just add to that a little bit? It doesn't mean you can't.
Yeah, I think the need might not be there because we're looking over a 20-year period, not trying to figure out what's happening six hours from now.
Right. Derek and I work for, we have a couple of clients where we actually do forecasts for them based on weather forecasts. We get an inflow, we put it into their model, and we can give them, you know, usually there's an ensemble, so we get a, a range of possibilities going forward from today, say. And so that helps guide the operations. That's not what we're building here, we're building a planning model.
Yeah.
Long-range planning. But that doesn't mean that you couldn't use it as, as a forecast model as well.
Yeah, I think eventually we probably want to get to something for the operations side, too.
Ask how next week looks.
If it, if it takes 48 hours to move water from the top to the bottom, it'd be nice to know if we start now, right?
Well, the biggest benefit to that sophisticated of a model is to be able to maximize hyperpower revenue. Yeah, because you can time the margin better, but which isn't necessary right now because of the type of contract that we have.
Did you mention that you're using the average for the last 10 years for the circle periods for your calibration? Is there a concern that you might be underestimating the deliveries from Lake Colby because the last 10 years has been relatively dry compared to the period they're comparing it to?
That, that's certainly a possibility. I would say that also, ever since the 2014, 2015 drought, just per capita use is down, you know, even in wet years, it spills down from where it used to be. And so you see reduced deliveries because of that over the last 12 years, and it's hard to separate how much of it is because of the mix of dry years and how much of it is because there's just kind of a new mindset going forward, it seems. So, as I said, so, you know, we have put together a calibration study with these parameters, and we're running it. And so we've got these output sets that we're reviewing to try and determine whether we think we have sufficient calibration. And so this is just one page, one example of, here we're looking at Lake Spalding. So we've got storage released to the river, diversions into Powerhouse One, Powerhouse Two, looking at actual gauged data, meaning what happened historically, and then we're looking at output from model and looking to see that it performs relatively close. Again, this is one calendar year of Lake Spalding. So we've got, you know, 1976 through 2021 at Lake Spalding, and then the same thing at all the other 29 reservoirs that we talked about. And so we, we put these together, you know, we basically got it where we can, we run a small piece of code that takes model output and turns it into a set of PDFs of these kind of graphs, and then we can go review those PDFs. We've also got a set of output where we're looking at each, oh, sorry.
Can you talk a little bit about the Lake Spalding release to river and the model? It shows a large release that doesn't, doesn't appear in the gauge data?
I, I can. Spills from Lake Spalding are not gauged and don't show up in the gauge data. And so when we have spill events, we can't see that.
Yeah, so the spill, how, the outflow from the spill is downstream of what it gauges?
Yeah.
So it's, okay, so it's shown still that there may not have occurred?
Right, and so certainly, you know, just looking at historic reservoir levels, they were most likely spilling.
Right, you can see that from the level of the reservoir, but you're not going to catch that from the gauge upstream.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's a couple of reservoirs where we have that issue.
Yeah.
Where the spills are not gauged, and, you know, it's like we can look at the flow when we've got it, we can look at the storage trace throughout here as we're, we have to make do with it.
Can you thought of trying to calibrate it downstream gauges? Like, like, you know, index downstream gauge if there is one?
That, that's a good point. I guess we, we can definitely do that.
It'd be interesting to see if, you know, if the model is assuming completely, if the model is, so if the model is assuming that it's spilling, the reservoir is spilling based on the water surface elevation in the river, you might not catch it at the first gauge, but downstream gauges presumably you would see that spike, and you could use it as a check of whether or not the model is representing that spill at your place.
Yeah, and, you know, for Lake Spalding, that's a location where we could do that. A lot of these other reservoirs, there might not be one. But yeah, that's a good, that's a good point, and we should try to incorporate that into the Lake Spalding and, yeah, possibly we can look into some others as far as that. So we've also got a set of output looking at all powerhouse tunnels, all canals. And so, you know, here, upper left corner, we're looking at an annual volume exceedance. Upper right corner, we're looking at kind of the yearly pattern, right? So we've got 365 days, and we're looking at there's some sort of seasonal problem, even if the, the volume is right. Bottom left, we've got the annual volumes. And you can see that, you know, over the last 10 years are the 10 dots to the right where it's matching historic a lot more than, say, the, the 10 dots all the way to the left where historically they might have had different operational strategies in, say, the 80s. So our next steps is we are going to continue putting in the drought calibrator, drought contingency plans and those delivery cutbacks. We're going to continue going down this process of doing these calibration studies and analyzing the output to, you know, make a decision on whether the calibration is good enough at each location. And we're going to continue working with NID staff and stakeholders developing post-processing tools that, you know, like the one we talked about easier earlier, that lets us analyze what's going on in the model, but also gets metrics of interest. Say if somebody's really interested in generation, we can make one on generation, et cetera. Then, as I alluded to earlier, in the little bit more, once that's finished and we think we have a model that represents historic operations given historic inputs, then we're going to start to determine which scenarios we're going to run, which climate change scenarios we're going to run, which demand scenarios we're going to run. Obviously, that's going to be interactive with the big group. But then once that's been decided, we will start putting those inputs into the RESIM model, running those, and then we're at a place where we can start looking at the answers to the questions, right?
I'm not seeing any from the public.
We did also have this presentation and discussion with the smaller group, not quite two weeks ago, it was a week and a half ago. So similar to what we did with the IDC modeling, did that as well, so.
Yeah, I have a question, a comment. Help me remember, Jen, and Ford. Did we update our drought contingency plan? I thought we were going to do that, so my, the comment is, we'd want to make sure we have the most updated information of the board's drought contingency plan for them to plug into the model.
So the drought contingency plan that's currently being used is the one that was in the 2020 urban and ad water management plan?
Right, that's what I thought.
And it was adopted by the board.
Right.
The challenge that we had was that with this last two rounds of emergency declarations that came out of the governor's office, they had requirements for conservation that were different than any of the particular stages in our drought contingency plan. So we had, we had adopted a resolution that was a little bit of a hybrid.
I remember that we did.
I don't, at this point, recommend updating the drought contingency plan because we'll just kind of keep chasing our tail on it until, but I think after we do some of this work, we can take a look at it again.
Because I do remember it was sort of incomplete, and then we did this hybrid and so.
It wasn't ever incomplete. I think that there was a desire on the board to completely adopt a new one due to the
Yes, that's right.
modifications that were being caused by the governor's emergency declaration. But it, but because of the way it was originally adopted through the adoption of the urban and ad water management plan, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to actually do that. So it kind of ended up with this hybrid, and most agencies in fact did.
But we have six steps that are married up with the state. So we're all in the same language and communication is, they, they want stage three, well, we have the same stage three.
Yeah, well, kind of. That was what the problem was. They didn't align.
They did not align.
Well, we, I think we borrowed a little bit.
We had to borrow, we had to make a code.
Well, that's the point about this model is, well, like, what are they going to do?
There's nothing we can do about it. The governor, if they issue an emergency declaration, it's going to be what it is, and we just have to try to fit it into our.
And ultimately, this is a.
The question doesn't fit us.
Yeah, and ultimately, this is a living document, right? That's our upgrade thing.
Right.
We make changes to that, or we start to see trends that, that are making changes, and then we can go back and make adjustments to the operations part of it so that it takes into account whatever new drought contingency layout we want to do.
And as things change, that's, you know, why we have this kind of five-year update.
Right, thank you.
So I just wanted, can you comment on the calibration methodology? Is this, you know, manual calibration? Is this internal to the RESIM software or are there third-party softwares like PESTER UKO that you're using for the calibration?
Definitely no third-party stuff. So reservoir calibration is difficult. Difficult. Things happen historically, tunnels collapse, canals go out for six-month outages, et cetera. And so to a certain extent, there are places where the, and years where the reservoir doesn't calibrate and it just kind of never will. And as long as you can explain why, that's essentially good enough for what we're doing here. You know, you could say, well, look, firstly, they took a six-month outage, we take a two-week outage, without forcing the model to take a six-month outage, we're never going to match that. And we kind of document that and, and move forward. And so it's a bit of a manual process and essentially a, a documentation process where we're, we're pointing out the places where it doesn't calibrate well and trying to describe why we think that.
And that's internal to your, to your process, right? Do you have like a QAC that you kind of go group that kind of reviews and goes through all that? It is internal to them, but they do have processes on how they, they do that calibration and have somebody review it internally at least to make sure.
Yeah, so another engineer will be reviewing it and then bring it to me and saying, hey, what happened here in 1983?
I was just curious how the actual parameters were adjusted or selected during that process. It sounds like it's just, it's a manual adjustment.
Yeah.
I would like to just make an observation, and it's obviously a very complex, we're, this is a very complex analysis.
learning, this is a very complex analysis that's being completed. And you can correct me if I'm wrong, Doug, but as I recall, when we did this process back six years ago, probably five years ago, I think we more or less just presented, here's what the data analysis showed. And I do want to commend the district for approaching it in the way we're doing. It is very complex from my, you know, experience to be able to comprehend, but I think what we're, will incrementally learn more as we go along, it also gives members of the public who have questions to raise those questions as we're going along and not end up where we did that, in that previous, where everyone was, well, not everyone, but some people were going, hey, this doesn't make sense. I don't understand.
This is a lot more transparent.
A lot more transparent, and I, I think that it takes a lot of effort to bring presentations like this to us and the public. And I just want to commend the district for the way you're approaching it. I think it's really solid.
It takes a little bit longer, but I think it's worth it. One of the challenges with some of the previous modeling, I think the simply people didn't know, weren't brought along as it was developed, and so there was some discomfort with that.
Yep. This gives people, I want to really encourage the public, if you have issues, if you have questions, concerns, ideas, bring them up now because we don't want to be, you know, we're going to be nine months from now talking about the impact of this, and we'd rather deal with your concerns and issues as we're moving along. So just want to encourage that. And also want to thank the 21 people on our, in our meeting today, as well as the members of the public who are here today for taking time to be here and asking great questions. So thank you.
Well, it looks like that is all we have for today, and I'm not seeing any more questions from the public. So we will be back. When is our next meeting?
Well, in theory, it'd be the.
Yeah, we're going to have to, we're, our schedule kind of got a little bit off track with needing to move this. We do appreciate everyone's flexibility and a little bit more time to put this particular piece together.
Yeah.
So we will report back as soon as we know when our next meeting's going to be.
Okay, thank you.
Probably in months.
Yeah, we have to see. Doug and I will sit and talk about it, and we'll figure that out in a couple days.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Oh, wait, we have one question. Somebody got their hand raised. Oh, Tracy, please go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay? Wonderful. Trace, yes, thank you for noticing my hand. Tracy Shanfotill's Water Network. I have a question that goes back to last meeting, and because of your thorough, you're being so clear on ask questions now, I know that it's from last meeting, but I'm hoping I can ask it. There was a, what's called a demand matrix. It's about a page and a half, and Jennifer knows what I'm talking about. I'm hoping, under, when we were talking about demand scenarios, that we can place that on the list for discussion so that people can understand the quantifiable amounts connected to what those, the demand scenario matrix says. And some of that's, those are quantifiable amounts so that we can understand both the bookends, but also just the general rationale and also the inputs in that demand matrix. And so some of those things were like land use, agricultural use. What I think is, it's been great here to understand and have this depth of explanation, and now I just want to match it with those numbers and rationale and quantification so you can better understand what the input actually is, if that makes sense.
Yeah. The spreadsheet that Tracy is referencing.
The demand model?
Correct. It shows the data sources that will be used as inputs into the demand model.
Yes.
So what we will do is that we'll start looking at each one. Once the model is a little bit more built, we'll start looking at it. That is where some adjustments can be made and how I think people in their minds are going to be able to frame up the scenarios a little bit better because idea is right to kind of have the bookend scenarios of worst case and the best case scenario. And then for a planning purpose, you know, it's going to be a question of what risks the board wants to take or not to take, and probably fall somewhere in the middle of that. So we can certainly start going through those items when they come up. But Tracy, if you have specific issues with where the, the data sources are coming from and you feel that we should be using a different data source, I think that was what the real point of passing that out at that time is, just let us know and we can take consideration of that. And then as we get more into putting the inputs in, which they're doing now, we'll start talking about the specific numbers that are going in.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, meeting adjourned.